I certainly feel an affinity for Winona because I've been here a whole lot the past, the past three years now. And definitely like to thank you for welcoming us into this community. I think we're off to a good start now after a rough 2016 and hope to be here for many, many years. Would you like me to update on the numbers that Lucy mentioned or a bit about your business?
Sure.
What would your preference be?
Both, if you want.
Okay. I'm not long-winded. As Lucy mentioned, we have fifteen manufacturing employees right now. The reason, primarily, the primary reason regarding the manufacturing employees that we requested an extension was last year when we were having some struggles, we were struggling to make a quality product. We did have, we did have a layoff last fall. And because we didn't know what the market was going to be like and we didn't know that we were going to have the success that we've had to date this year, I made the decision to use a temporary agency to fill out the second and third shifts initially. And we're hiring these people full-time now as their six hundred hours come off. We're required to pay them for six hundred hours through the temporary agency and then we can, then we can hire them. And I believe to date we've hired four folks in that way. And I think everyone will have their six hundred hours by the end of the year, roughly. So we should be, we should be fine there. The fifteen does not include two new sales reps that we hired and it doesn't include an additional, an additional added position. So we're, we're close and I think we'll, we'll get there. Last year we sold ten thousand tons of our product, the straight commodity product. This year we're already at sixteen and I believe that we'll finish out the year somewhere around twenty-five thousand tons. We have some new products that we're introducing. One is a higher, a higher sulfur fertilizer than, than currently made. Another one we've been approached by Great Lakes Lime to, to make an organic lime product for them. But we've also been approached by some customers to, to make a product with humex. So we're, we're actually experimenting with that this week and hope to, hope to get those finished off as well to be ready for the 2018 spread this year.
Okay.
Good news on the employment, in addition to hiring these folks full-time, I do think that our demand based on some changes in our competitive position will be sufficient to require level production year-round, which was the goal. Fertilizers only spread really in four months a year. So the best you could hope for is to have level production throughout the, throughout the twelve months to, to be ready for those, those four months to follow up this spring. And that's where I think we will be. We're actively looking for additional storage right now. But is nice and storage more a problem than demand at this point? So I thank the, I thank Winona and Minnesota Investment Fund and the court for the support of our business and we hope to be good citizens here. If you ever have issues or hear concerns from any of your constituents, please let me know. We want to be a home here. Happy to answer any additional questions.
Thank you. Pam?
Thank you, Mr. Musser. This is all good news. I'm interested in hearing, I understand that the, that there was a, not just a job creation goal, but also a wage level goal that was set.
Yes, yes.
Could you speak about the company's progress on meeting the wage level goal?
We, we, we've overshot by far. We're well ahead of the wage goal. I believe the wage goal, Lucy, do you know exactly?
At the time it was twelve eighty-five or twelve forty-five was the floor and I think you're above fifty.
Where, all of the manufacturing employees are at least fifty.
Very good.
And several are higher than that. The benefits are, our owners were owned by two gentlemen in Chicago and they take employee benefits and welfare benefits, but the health insurance is quite good.
Thank you.
Just curious if you want to remind folks why you picked Winona?
That's a good question. Why would I ask me that too? Winona is a great place to locate a fertilizer facility. Simply, well, not simply because, but partially because so much grain is originated here. If you think about ADM and, and CHS and all the grain and, and the mill, all the grain that originates here causes trucks to come in with grain. Quite often they go out with fertilizer. So it's, it's a great place to co-locate. And the second reason that we picked Winona is Minnesota, Wisconsin, and Eastern Iowa are three of the most sulfur deficient soils in the country. So most of our product goes out and is spread within a hundred miles. We've shipped to Canada. We've shipped to the Dakotas. Most of those within a hundred miles.
Do you do any shipping by barge?
We do. We have shipped two barges down to Bubba. We are actively trying to sell a barge to go down to Arkansas. There's been a surprising number of peanuts planted in Arkansas in the last couple of years. And peanuts are rarely grown without jimson. So we haven't, we haven't managed to sell that yet, but we're working on it.
Other questions, way counsel? Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak to this topic? Anybody else wish to speak? One more chance. Hearing done. Declare the public hearing closed. I'm going to ask if there's a motion by counsel.
I'd make a motion to approve the attached resolution authorizing a year extension to gypsum soil. Second, Pam.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam. Any further discussion? Hearing done. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Carries.
Item two point two is the public hearing to consider a resolution to levy assessments for unpaid charges. Distributed this evening was an updated assessment roll which reduced some of the accounts that were paid off through this afternoon.
Okay. I'll declare the public hearing open and turn over the finance department.
Mayor Peterson and council members, through four o'clock today, the payments reduced the special assessments to one hundred and sixty-eight thousand, one hundred and thirty-five dollars and eight cents. And those are against four hundred and thirty-seven properties.
Thank you. Anybody else, did anybody here wish to speak to this issue? Anybody wish to speak to the levy assessments? One final chance. Anybody wanting to speak to the levy assessments? Hearing done. Public hearing's closed. And again, ask for a motion.
I'll make a motion to adopt the attached resolution and levy the special assessments.
Second.
Motion by Michelle and seconded by George. Any discussion? Al?
Just a question. I am sorry, I didn't ask this when you were up to the microphone, but you said there were four hundred and thirty-seven properties against which these assessments will be applied. How does that compare to past years as far as assessments and number of properties and I'm just curious as to the overall trend, whether it's up, you know, staying the same or it's lower than it has been in the past. I support the resolution, by the way, but I'm just curious from an informational basis.
If you don't have that information, can you get it back to the council?
Yeah, and that's fine too.
So last year at this time it was four hundred and thirty-one properties and the, and we're very similar with the total dollar amount. It was a hundred and fifty-nine thousand.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I wasn't interested in to the penny, but I know you are because that's what you do, but just in indication of the general trend. So, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing done. We'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same side. Carries.
Item two point three is an appeal of the decision of the Heritage Preservation Commission for Abramson Properties.
We declare the public hearing open and ask Lou to start it up.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. Before you today is an appeal of the decision of the Heritage Preservation Commission regarding a certificate of appropriateness. The applicant, Scott Abramson of Abramson Properties, brought this forward after he had erected a sign at seventy-two East Third Street. And that sign was forty-eight inches tall and thirty inches wide and projects over the sidewalk to represent eight feet. The city code permits projecting signs in the downtown historic district, subject to compliance with the certificate of appropriateness from the Heritage Preservation Commission. Because this came in after it was erected, he submitted a sign application, a sign permit application as well as a certificate of appropriateness afterward. Location of seventy-two East Third is right next to the Oddfellas Building, just a couple blocks up. And this is the signage question currently filled out with two sign boards within the frame of the bracket that is connected to the front of the dual frontage building, then the chain that goes across both frontages. The COA application came before the Heritage Preservation Commission on August ninth for their meeting. And in particular, they found that it was not compliant with three findings of the historic district guidelines that are informed by the Secretary of Interior Standards. And that is that new signage should be composed of traditional materials such as wood, copper, or bronze. This is composed of acrylic. And the signage for commercial storefronts should be compatible with the scale, style, and period of the building. And the HPC felt that the four feet by two and a half feet was not, not in compliance. And the signage should be subordinate to the building. Signboards are specifically called out that if used, they need not exceed two and a half feet in height, in this case forty-eight inches, four feet. This is coming before you today as an appeal and your three options are to affirm the denial of the decision, the denial decision of the HPC, affirm the HPC denial decision, and amend the findings of fact based on the historic district guidelines, or overrule the HPC denial decision by stating new findings in this instance. Also, the applicant is here today to give some further information and answer any questions.
Okay. Well, thank you, Lou. Just to spell out a little bit about the process here, the appellant has up to twenty minutes to share with the council.
Not that we need.
Okay. Good. Thank you. And then take questions from members of the council and then an opportunity for other people that may want to speak. And then the city staff, if they have anything further and questions again from the council and we'll close the public hearing and, and talk about it. We'll move to Mr. Abramson now.
Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor, City Council members. I'm Scott Abramson from two six 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 three County Road seventeen, and I'm here to appeal the Heritage Preservation Commission's decision on a sign at seventy-two East Third Street. The first thing was to adjust the size and scale of the sign, specifically the bracket, to be more in keeping with the character of the surrounding buildings. Well, the present sign size is needed because there are three potential business entities that need their name noticeable to the public. There is now a huge eye beam behind the exterior wall that wasn't there three years ago, making the attachment to the, to the wall much more difficult than your standard sign. So we had to be creative and hang the sign from the existing eyeballs that were coming out of the building. The brackets would be painted red to match the brick color and cream to match the stone. That was the idea with the bracket. So that big bracket that we put on there for support would be painted and blended in to the two areas of the building. We requested a historical downtown look from a professional lacrosse sign company. They're the ones that came up with the design and we had to do some tweaking with that design for that location. The building is allowed eighty square feet of signage. This sign is twenty square feet of signage, ten feet on one side and ten feet on the other. There's still potentially another sixty feet of available footage for us to use if we were to need it. So we don't have that much signage there. Plus it's, we've only got forty feet there. We don't have a hundred and forty-foot building where you add three businesses, you add three small separate signs on it. We've got only a forty-foot distance and you don't want to put canopies on that when you have that, that insert that goes in ten feet. The post sign is the way to go. We just ran into a problem. We have an eye beam there that we have to work out. I can't get around the eye beam. I just can't get around the eye beam. We can't get rid of it because we need it for the building to stay there. And that bracket is, to me, is not going to be a problem. Over at one oh one West Third Street, when we did the corner there, there was one stone that was missing. So we had to make a fake stucco stone. We got, went to Sherman Williams, got matching paint and painted the same color as the stone below it. The only thing I have left to do yet is that I want to get a little fleck of orange or yellow to fleck onto that stone because the bees on stone has that little second color that's in it. So I want to go back to that little square and get that to, so that is the same. Second is use a sign material that is in keeping with the historic commercial guidelines. Acrylic signs are made of a lightweight and shadow-resistant polymer. Metal Logos Architectural Signage Company states that another option to metal signs is acrylic. Metallic paint adheres to it and presents the solid metal look without the solid metal cost. I didn't get into, I've been working with the acrylic and acrylics are very reasonable, but you get into the steel, it has to be thicker for the windage and the extra weight on the sign is going to be considerable. So we get around the weight and we get around a lot of extra cost. That's why I went after this, I went up and down downtown Winona to take a look at all the other signage. And after I did so, I really realized why we have the Heritage Preservation Commission. The signage in the downtown needs guidance. I totally agree. We've got so many awnings down there that are covered with old and a lot of plastic. Now acrylic is not plastic. It's a, it's a higher quality than, people are using, a merchants bank on the plaza uses, they have a, it's a, they got the little logo and it says merchants and then it says financial services. That's done out of acrylic and it's a lot thicker. If they were to sit there and go and use steel, would drive up their cost. Plus after you paint it, you can't tell the difference. I'm willing to, on the steel signs that we, the acrylic signs that we have there, to take them down, put steel ones in there, but you guys are going to drive by and ask me why I haven't put them up yet because they look exactly the same. Semtech has a big sign on their building. It looks like steel, but it's not. It's a, it's acrylic. It's, it's just a smart way to go. After you paint it, you think it's steel. So I don't think that you, the Heritage Preservation Committee really wants to take a look at acrylic. There's acrylic being done out there that is very quality and looks very, very good. You don't want to take that away from the people that are trying to control cost. And look, having something extra heavy, I mean, steel's going to be really heavy, especially if you want to do something thick or thick lettering. So if you're making people use a steel or something solid rather than acrylic that can look like it, I really don't see the point. We don't want the wood boards up there painted that deteriorate. Acrylic doesn't do that. It still looks like a steel sign. So I think for, that's probably why Lacrosse Signage went ahead and gave you that as an example to use. It just makes good logical sense in the signage world. Now acrylic signs are much lighter than steel signs. Acrylic was the choice of the sign, design team. Plastic is not used because it looks cheap, not in place. This acrylic is very thin like a steel panel. Once you, once painted, you cannot tell the difference between acrylic and steel. Acrylic is used all over the downtown Winona. Acrylic is an asset, not a problem. I guess in close, the bracket to me makes sense because there's a structural beam there. If there wasn't a structural beam, we would just have a square plate like this, just like Lacrosse Sign had in their plant, but they didn't realize we had an eye beam there. So as a developer, I have to then get creative and that's what we came up with. Next summer, I'm actually working with Nick, I'm supposed to meet him tomorrow morning at eight-thirty from the city for that building to restore the brick. We want to take all the old brick that are bad and replace, restore the upper. There's a steel metal beam that goes over the entire window to the right side. We want to balance out the two buildings so that they both look the same because we, below it looks the same, the signage, the cedar looks the same, but the two buildings aren't able. So we're going to equal those two off by putting brick in that steel beam so that will square off the building. Then we're going to probably have to paint it. We have a choice to just go in red or maybe possibly two colors. We've got two buildings there, but I'm kind of leaning toward just one color because we're trying to create a one building look even though we have different windows. The bees on stone wouldn't need to be painted to be able to keep that. I would think a nice, the natural stone that's right there would just be the brick that needed to be worked with because we've got two different buildings and probably two different bricks. And so I'm thinking probably red is, that one's going to look good there. And then down below, we want to continue with that bees on stone that we put on the pillar. Wherever you see red, our goal is to put bees on stone wherever the red is. That, that light color coming back into the space is just going to really pull your eyes into the space and make that space a lot better. Making the signs, I wish I had talked about all these little different things. I was meeting with the appropriateness committee on one oh one West Third Street, fifty-four East Third Street, seventy-two East Third Street. Sometimes we would be on, spend one week, we'd be doing two different properties. We've been doing this for about over a year. So I've been meeting with these, this committee and they're a good committee. They give me a lot of good ideas. And I've been meeting with them for the last couple of years and we've talked about bees on stone, brick. I even actually did show them the signs, but the signs never did, white make the full round that I showed them. And I think I wouldn't have been here if I thought that had occurred. I guess I'm open to questions.
Michelle?
Is your frame steel or metal?
Yes.
Not the, okay.
It's steel.
I actually don't have a problem with that at all, even the size of it, because we put one on our building. I understand the issues you encounter when you're trying to deal with wind.
Right.
I kind of hope you don't paint it because I, I like the way the original steel, the black steel looks against a building. But you do what you think is best.
I've been getting so much grief on it from the.
I understand it's big, but you had to put that giant beam in there. I know exactly what the problem is. And even the lines that come off the side, if you walk down and look at any, like our sign on top of our building, you have to have the wire. We have three of them or the, the structure's not sound. I mean, they, my only issue is yours are white or metal. I mean, ours are black, so they blend in more. I don't think you would see them if they're black. But I don't really have a problem with your frame at all. I understand why they, the size of it is disturbing to HPC, but I don't know what else you could have done there and still put up a sign that projects. I don't know how I feel about the acrylic. I'm still thinking about that. I, they don't look like steel to me, but they also didn't bother me when I walked down the street. I didn't look at it and think that's a horrible sign in the downtown. So mostly I was just, just, the frame is steel, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's my only question.
Other questions? George?
Scott, is this the building that they had the structural problem with?
Yes.
It was starting to tip or sink or whatever it was?
Yeah.
Okay. And that whole front of that building was all reinforced, correct?
Yes, yeah. Yes, exactly right behind that area.
Okay.
Are there other questions? Al?
Yeah, Mr. Abramson, you worked with, you said Lacrosse Sign?
Yes.
To, to put this together. I assume Lacrosse Sign has been doing business in Winona over a number of years. I guess it's surprising to me that this company has been involved with the community that they didn't, you know, raise this particular issue with you, with your sign before it gets moved forward.
I'm a little surprised too. I think their third thought is it's so much cheaper. We, we ended up not being able to use them because my gosh, they were asking twelve thousand dollars for that sign. I could do that a lot cheaper than what they were asking. And the prices these people charge are just through the roof. But they were thinking that, they were charging me, not that it is, they had a solid steel to it, but even been a lot higher. So by going with the acrylic, you get this exact steel look. It's almost the same thickness because the thickness isn't that much, well, actually the thickness might be the same because a lot of times on the, on the wall, you put a steel, like over at two-twenty East Third, we have a steel sign on there for the Winona self-story. And I think that has a backing of acrylic to give it some more stability. But, should I answer your question?
Well, in a way it does, I guess. You know, you mentioned the price difference and I guess that's kind of the, a little bit of the issue. I didn't know that the, the frame itself was steel, which, which I guess would, in my opinion, make some of these arguments not as valid as they were before. But what is, or can you give me a percentage, is, is the, the signs that you're proposing to install or that is the purpose of this public hearing? What is the percentage difference between what, what the COA requires and, and what you're proposing in this case that the Heritage Preservation turned you down on? Half as much? You mentioned twelve thousand dollars, I think, is the figure?
Well, I was able to get the sign done for about two. So it was just a drastic difference. Been able to use Ironcraft in Winona and put it together here than using that Lacrosse Sign Company. We've got people around here that can get stuff done a lot more efficiently, a lot cheaper.
So Lacrosse Sign didn't?
They didn't do the sign, no.
Oh, 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 okay.
They did the initial work, but when they shot it twice where we said, we've got to go to plan B. And so we, we took the knowledge that they had.
Their ideas and then went through the local supplier, area supplier.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Scott, I'd like to, first of all, thank you for your longtime investment in downtown Winona.
I haven't even lost it being done yet.
Well, I know you're not, but you've, you've been a longtime player downtown. You've done some really good work.
Thank you.
I guess, but with that said, I guess it bothers me that, you know, that the sign was erected without consulting, you know, without getting a permit, first of all, and then not having consulted with the Preservation Committee.
Well, I was meeting with it all the time. I actually showed them the sign, but I've been, since we, in all these years in business, I didn't have, we didn't have to do anything with scientists. Anyhow, I, we, I showed them the sign and we just never, that, it fell through the cracks of actually going through, we did everything else, but the sign just never got to the final talk.
My memory's a little foggy here, but I seem to remember we went through this once earlier on the Good Roads Building with a sign that had to be changed. Wasn't there some sign that was erected and, you don't recall that? I remember there was some issue with some signage down there. But anyway.
Anyway, I apologize for not, I, I, it never's going to happen again, I'll tell you that. I make sure I make, the next sign I put in, I make sure that they, they get a double copy of it.
Well, as you said, we have, you know, a good reason for having guidelines of the downtown because of a lot of inappropriate signage. I guess I'm, I'm bothered by the fact that a permit wasn't issued and, or given and that the guidelines weren't met. And I think if we had gone to the, the commission, you would have had a little different sign that might have been a better sign. And for that reason, I guess I'm troubled by this and I, I wish you had followed the guidelines. But anyway, other questions or comments for, Scott?
Just, just a comment. I am not so bothered by the acrylic. Signs that stick out from the side of the building like that and can catch the wind make me wary. In fact, I oftentimes just walk around them. I just never sure how they're fastened or what the wind might do. So I'm, I'm uncomfortable with, with those signs and the lighter the material, the better in terms of injuring people that, that may be passing. That doesn't bother me. It does bother me that there was no, that there was no oversight, design oversight because I think with the Heritage Preservation Commission, you'd have come up with a nicer looking sign and something designed more in keeping with, with the building. If you'd been, if you'd kept two and a half feet instead of four, would that have eliminated that bottom piece that right now it's open in the photograph? It's open.
What is the two and a half by four, the two and a half feet thing? I never heard that before.
As part of the size and scales regulations in the historic district guidelines, it specifically calls out sign boards going down to two and a half feet, need not exceed two and a half feet. And the other portion of that is that the sign must be subordinate. And the other portion of that is that the sign must be subordinate to the building, not the opposite, meaning within the appropriate size and scale.
So this sign is, is, uh, what, forty, some forty inches?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight, four feet?
Four feet by two and a half feet.
Oh, two and a half. This way is the limitation?
Correct.
Oh, I thought we were talking this way.
It's forty-eight inches tall, thirty inches wide.
And is the size within the, the limitations?
The forty-eight inches would be taller than two and a half feet as put in the guidelines.
Okay.
Guidelines say two and a half feet tall.
Oh, okay, well.
And that's for one sign, correct?
Yeah, I think that's a problem.
And we've got three businesses, though.
That was gonna be my question. Is it per business, or is he, are we requiring businesses to put up three separate hanging signs that fit the two and a half feet?
I would defer to the institutional knowledge of both the chairperson, who is here to answer questions, and other people who have been here slightly longer than I am.
Yeah, I'm just curious, 'cause the way I was looking at it is three separate signs, but you're saying that we can't look at it that way? 'Cause the height didn't bother me, 'cause I realized he was dividing it, and I guess I'd rather see that than three hanging signs on the front of that building.
So do I.
When this came before the commission, as shown in the application, it was actually empty, and so we were taking the sign frame put into consideration, correct?
Does, does, does HP, do, do you have something to comment on that? I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand where the HPC would come on, on this type of thing.
Okay.
Sure, sir. Well, I think they wanna wait till we're done with Mr. Abramson. Are there other questions for Scott? Otherwise we'll open up for HPC members that are here to speak if they wish.
Are you gonna sit down?
I think there are no more questions, but we can come back to you if we have to.
I'll be over here.
Thank you. Is there anybody else here that wishes to speak? His glasses. State your name and address, purpose.
Kendall Larson, 652 East Fourth Street, and I am the chair of the HPC. Uh, so to answer your question, uh, so my time is, I think, about four years on the HPC, and I, to my knowledge, we haven't dealt with a multiple sign. What I would've, I think, well, what the HPC would've done, if we had known about this and seen the application beforehand, is we would've called this, we would've called on institutional memory, we would've called up to the Shippox State Preservation Office to ask what their guidelines are, and we would've done a little research. Uh, so that said, we would've been prepared to deal with that piece. Um, and then, so looking at it already completed, we were looking at the guidelines that were there, and so we were looking at whether the sign felt like, was it subordinate to the building, or was the, um, and also, uh, we're looking at the guidelines of two and a half feet as well. And so we looked at it from the front, also from the side. If you look at it from the side, it's very much, very large and from blocks, a chunk of the, of the, um, the downtown escape. So that was a piece of, it doesn't seem to be subordinate. Um, and the other things, uh, we did look at whether it was compatible, we looked at that scale, on the style and the period. Um, there were things we did notice that the metal is, that holds it on the sides is like a chain-type link, and when you look at a lot of the signs that have gone through the HPC process, they tend to be smaller, silver, very hard-to-sea, black, very strong wires, so they don't distract from the buildings themselves. So there's that piece. Uh, and with the brackets, I think that's something, uh, we would need more of a structural, I guess, engineer's opinion on whether that bracket, or look at it, was that it was a very large bracket, uh, that we did talk with Abramson about. Again, he does have significant structural, um, issues with the building, so we would need that additional information of whether that could've been done differently. Again, we were reacting to that, the application after the fact, those were our findings, as I mentioned. I think we have another question, who has some science to do if you'd like to.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Peter Shortbridge, and I live at 2450 Garvin Heights in Winona. I'm a member of the HPC, and I was, uh, one of the committee members that reviewed the COA with Mr. Abrams. So as Kendall's already touched back, and, you know, so I'm here speaking in the quest that you, as a council, support your HPC and, um, support our denial of this. And there's a number of reasons for that. The most obvious reasons is as far as, our job is to take the National Park standards and the State Historic Preservation Office standards and implement them. We have very clear guidelines. It doesn't mean if you had five different people in your building that you were renting, you couldn't have a sign within, you know, the argument wouldn't be, "Well, we can have a sign that's seven, eight feet longer. We have ten tenants." The Shippox guidelines and the National Park guidelines are very clear on the scale of these kind of buildings. So, um, the materials as well, whether we like acrylic, don't like acrylic, whether you think it's a cool material, whether you think it isn't, it's plastic. It's made from oil. So acrylic is one of the things that aren't allowed under the National Park guidelines nor under the Shippox guidelines. So were we to start saying, "Well, in this case, yeah, in this case, no," we wouldn't be consistent, and it's not only our job to be consistent as far as interpreting and working with the standards, and we're all just volunteers here for this. But it would also be unfair to all the other people that have been compelled to do the signs the right way. Then there comes the issue of it's, we're asking for forgiveness instead of permission. Even if you're not in the Historic District, you have to get a sign permit before you get a sign, and if you use a professional sign company, they take out your sign permit. You get that, follow the steps. In the case of the Historic District, in the areas where HPC has some oversight, then before you can get that sign permit, you have to come to this, to the HPC and get a COA. And we address that whole, what size is it? Is it fitting with the building? Does it fit in the neighborhood? Is it appropriate in scale and material and the things that we're charged to interpret those guidelines for? So the, after the fact, gee, it's already there, so why don't we kind of pretty it up a little bit and just leave it there? Because, gee, and, you know, we really work to try to be sympathetic with, with this situation. But the arguments as well about the structure of the building is another argument, and I want you to take a look at something else here if I have to, I'll just circle a few of those. And so what this is, we have a prior COA as well on this building, and the, the prior COA was for the work that started to be done on this building. I'm only showing you one detail to keep it simple. I brought some more shots, but, and in the prior COA, um, which is open, uh, which addressed the whole treatment of the exterior of this building, and the sign wasn't part of that. Um, the building was all to be tuck-pointed, all the structural damage was to be repaired, the metal cornice work was to be finished. There were some other areas and treatments on the ground floor. None of that work has been completed. The building does have structural issues, but those are issues caused by the construction of the applicant. They're not your problem. They're a problem to be worked with and to try to save the building, but just because you have structural problems that are compounding and because you have work that isn't complete yet, it's not a reason to allow further, you know, wiggle room on how it should be done. Now, I think the HPC will be coming back to you with staff in the next couple of months because we're seeing some of these issues. We have these open COAs that get approved, and then later the applicant or the landowner does whatever to the building. Some of it isn't following the COA, some of it is, it sits open, and there's no timeline on it. So we may be asking you for a little more clarification on how to put fixed timelines on either the applicant gets the work done or withdraws. So in this case, we've got a building that the COA hasn't been done, we've got some issues we've talked to Mr. Abrams about relative to the treatment of the building to complete it. The sign is a separate issue completely, and for us, it's really about consistency in interpreting the standards. The bracket is much larger than it should be. There are a number of ways with smaller signs to get around the structural issues. A giant sign requires a giant bracket. That's really what's driving that as much as anything. Um, you know, so again, I would, uh, and, and, you know, this came to us after the fact, it's like, gee, it's there, I was too busy to get a permit or ask for a COA, so we're gonna just leave it there. And we really felt it was inappropriate and that we should start over with that particular process as much as we wanna see this building done. We have an obligation, we haven't done correctly, had to execute the mandates we've been given to interpret those standards. Thank you for that.
Thank you. Anybody else here wish to speak to this issue? Anybody else? Last chance to speak to this issue. Hearing done. Or the public hearing closed. I believe I can. Well, yes, I'm following the, the, the steps here. Any more comments from city staff?
Not at this time, but I'm always available for questions.
Okay, all right. All right. Legal counsel, do you have anything you wanna say?
Mayor and Councilmen, you'll notice in the resolution that there are three alternate, option alternate, one, two, and three. Uh, alternate, alternate one, if you choose to go that route, would be to affirm the decision of the HPC. Alternate two would be to affirm the decision of the HPC, but modify the findings in some way. And then alternate number three is to overrule the decision of the HPC based on some additional findings, and then obviously if you wanna go down that direction, you could, after this sentence again, all of that's possible, other findings might be.
Okay, thank you. Al, I saw your hand go up.
No, I just had a question of city staff regarding this, um, and assuming, you know, we're, we're hearing a lot about standards and guidelines and how one might affect the other, um, I would ask staff to inform us about how, if we decide not to go forward with, with this, or if we deny the, the request, does that affect any future, um, opportunities we might or might not have with other funding agencies, be they federal or state?
Uh, this should not affect any funding agencies in particular, as each individual request comes forward for individual buildings that are taken within their own individual contexts. Uh, as the HPC does deliberate and interpret the guidelines from the Secretary of the Interior, Shippox, and from our own Historic Commercial District Guidelines, they take every individual aspect into account. So it should not be affecting any future funding.
Okay. Good, thank you.
Pam?
I would move to affirm the HPC decision denying the COA.
Motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion by Pam, seconded by Paul. Discussion? Are you, okay.
I just, no, I do feel, I, I am sympathetic. I told you that I like the, I don't mind the acrylic at all. Uh, I understand the structural problems with the I-beam. You know, there's some tweaks that I would make to design it and so forth, but, but I really think that we do have to stand up for the, for the Heritage Preservation Commission and for the standards that, that they are supposed to follow. So that's why I'm voting, that's why I'm ma, moving to affirm their decision.
Paul?
I, I wanna echo what Pam's saying, but I also, um, you know, we have a procedure for renovation of building, uh, and that permit should have been applied for. That would've avoided, I think, some of these, this, this particular issue if we'd been going through the process step by step, and we wouldn't be here right now. We would've had the permit, and we would've followed the procedure.
Well, I agree with, with those comments as well. I, I personally would support upholding the HPC's denial. Um, I think the bracket is oversized, um, I think the material's the problem, um, particularly, that's, my biggest problem is that there's no, there was no permit, uh, applied for, and to come back after the fact, um, I just, I just have a real problem with that. I think it would've been a different sign. I think, you know, it's, ignorance is no excuse. I think the, um, the building owner should've known, if he didn't, that he needed a permit, and then he needed to go through the process, uh, with the Preservation Commission. And we have these guidelines down there for a reason, and I think we need to follow them. Um, I think it's unfortunate because, as I said, I think Mr. Abramson's done some amazing work downtown and, and a huge investment, and I'm really, uh, I'm pleased with so much of what I've seen him do, and, but I just think in this case, it would be wrong to just let it go. So I would support the motion as well. Jerry?
I have pretty much what you said right on down the line. Um, it's a tough decision, but then again, it's not. I mean, I agree, Mr. Abramson's done some outstanding work, and some of the issues that are brought up here, although they have to follow certain guidelines, don't seem to bother me too much, but that's me, it's not the governing body that's following other guidelines. And I think the biggest one on this one, too, is that, um, a couple of conversations weren't, did not take place, and the permit was not done. So, uh, reluctantly, I'm gonna support this.
Michelle?
I really questioned to try to find a way that we could come up with some rationale for overturning part of the, the findings, but there really wasn't anything there, because like Mr. Craig said, I don't actually, the sign does not offend me, I don't have an issue with it at all. I understand what we're trying to do in the downtown, and so for me, acrylic is the problem actually with the sign and, and the little metal chain. Um, but there's nothing really that was discussed here that allows us to have findings to overturn the order from the commission, so unfortunately for me, too, because I hate to do it knowing how expensive those signs are, having put one on our own building, um, but I, too, am supportive of the motion as stands.
George?
Yeah, Scott, like I say, when knowing you from the past, you, you are a very good experienced developer, and your work is good. And, you know, I think with all the knowledge that you have in the development business, I think this all could've been avoided. I think you could've, you know, said, you know, a guy, you know, and you have people that, you know, that look things over for you as well, too, but you invest thousands of dollars in our community, there's no doubt about that, without any help. And, uh, you know, I just feel that this, this could've been avoided.
Any other comments? If there aren't, we'll vote. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to the petitions, requests, and communications, item 3.1, reappointment to the Housing and Redevelopment Authority of James Kirk. Move to approve that appointment.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? George?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, I had a chance to serve with James here the past three years, four years, and he currently is the vice chairman of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. He's very much involved with the Kids First programs out there, working through the university, and he is certainly a great asset to the Housing and Redevelopment Board.
Thank you, it's good to hear. Any other comments? We'll vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. carries.
Item 3.2 is a temporary wine and malt liquor license for the Winona Community Foundation for the Birth to Grade Three Committee Harvest Tasting Fundraiser to be held on Saturday, October 14th. Move to approve the license.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. I see it's at History Center. Good place to have one, you have. All right, um, any other comments? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. carries.
Item 3.3 is a Winona State University Homecoming Parade Request for Saturday, October 21st.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion by Jerry and seconded by Michelle. Any comments? Paul?
Yeah, I noticed that the City of Anoka is banning candy, uh, from being, uh, tossed out during their Halloween parade.
That's sad.
I don't think you're supposed to throw it out at Steamboat Days, but, either.
Yeah, so I, I just, I know that candy is a big, uh, item during the parade. I, I'm just, just a note of comment, that's all.
What's Anoka doing about Christmas presents?
They ban Christmas in Anoka.
And I may be wrong, I think it was the City of Anoka.
Many cities ban candy like that, 'cause some kids have unfortunately been injured.
It's sad.
So other, to mitigate that, other, they require people to walk along the side of the crowd and they distribute the candy instead of throwing it from the vehicles.
Good idea.
George?
And I must say, this is one fine parade. It moves quickly and a lot of action, a lot of excitement, it's a, it's a fun time. Look forward to it every year.
Watching the spectators is almost as much fun as watching the parade.
It's a great parade. Joel, you wanna speak?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for hearing our.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, thank you for hearing our requests all these years. I wanted to talk to you today to thank you and the members of the city, the Winona Police Department, the member of the Street Department. You guys are great. Mr. Briggerstaff, we work together every year, so I want, if you could, Monica, make that a public record. You guys rock. I'd like to introduce to you Lindsey Rosi-Prager. And Lindsey is our new Assistant Activities Director of Winona State. And, well, one of her duties is going to be the homecoming parade starting next year. This is going to be my last one. Not retiring or anything like that, I'm not that old yet, but I thought it was time to delegate, I've done it for over 20 years and so we're going to, this is going to be her first parade this year, so I wanted to see the process and to meet you. The mayor is usually in the parade, so just make a note of that. He dresses up like FBI. Just want to say thank you and we do work on those issues with candy. We do have a problem because we're not on Broadway, we're on Hawk, so it squeezes in a little bit, you know, we're working on that, right? So, we're trying to work on ways to make it safer at that time of day, so appreciate your time and thank you for letting us do it. It's Saturday, October 21st, 10:00 a.m.
Thank you. Al?
Just a comment, Joe, you've been, as you say, 20 years. About that. How do you do it? You look younger every year you come here.
He's a politician.
That's a tradition, you know, a pole going forward, I guess.
Do you live in the first ward or something?
That's the first ward, isn't it?
I thought it was.
You look terrible.
Thank you again. Appreciate it.
Alright, thank you.
Good luck to you.
Anything else before we vote? If not, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes.
Item 3.4 is a request for use of Levy Park by the Winona County Wellness Committee for their walk on Thursday, October 5th.
Move to approve that request.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Paul. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.5 is the King Street Block Party on Friday, September 22nd. Do have a revised request for the times to be 4 till 6 p.m.
Move to approve request with revised times.
Second.
Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.6, the pedestrian crossing agreement with the Union Pacific Railroad Company.
I'd make a motion to approve the attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Discussion?
I just wanted to ask, is everything dealing with the railroad this extensive in its agreement and language? Okay, staff is nodding their heads, so I think we've dealt with that in the past, but I just had to confirm.
Is there anything in here about the Moe Lane?
Any, anything else?
Can you just touch briefly as to what we're all doing here?
Brian, you want to summarize?
This is the connection from the Levy Trail to what Mendoc will build, probably later part of next year, maybe early 2019. So as part of the bridge project, this is a connection that would get us from the trails going next to the bridge to Levy Trail.
Anything else? If not, let's vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.7 is a request for a stop sign on Zembro and Washington.
Move to approve that re, that introduction of the ordinance, second.
Motion by George, seconded by Paul. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 3.8 is a request for utility bill reduction by Teresa Stedman. Is she here?
You want to come to the microphone and state your name and address?
Teresa Stedman, 147 Fairfax. And I had a water bill that went up many hundred percent the next one I got. And I never owned a home before and I was thankful we had gotten a call that, from the Water Department, that it had really spiked. We had a leaking toilet, was all it was. But I didn't understand and I didn't, I wasn't home to take the call and I wasn't told how much it could go up, that it was that staggering. And I just wondered if there's a way to spread out payments, have it reduced at all. It has been fixed by a plumber pronto, but I was pretty shocked and just ignorance maybe is no excuse, but I didn't know how much it could go up or did go up. And I didn't have any options.
Okay, well, thank you. Other questions? Jerry?
When did the city contact you and tell you there was a spike?
I didn't write it down, but it was after, I think, I had just paid one bill, so that I was, that's why I was just shocked to get the next bill.
How long was it between when they called you and then you got it fixed?
The ones between the two bills.
I think the question is how long, from the time you received a call from the city staff, how long until you were able to fix it? Is that the right question?
Well, maybe I didn't get them, you know, the next day or anything, but I think within the month. Just because I didn't have sense to say, you know, how much is this likely to go up or how fast. I had called to see if I had a problem with city pressure before and then I had gotten a call about the sewer line, they wanted to take pictures and I thought maybe it was all related, that it wasn't just something in the house. I didn't know any better. And I guess I wasn't told, you know, how much it could go up. Do I have any options, but just to have time or to knock it down some.
Well, we'll see what the council would like to do. Thank you. Motion by the council?
Yeah, I would like to move that we reduce this utility bill by the amount above the normal portion of the water bill that is attributed to the charge for sewer processing. In other words, the logic behind that is that it was clean water that went through our sewer system and didn't require processing. And it was basically, I guess, helping everything else work out and I think this would be fair to Ms. Stedman to have that opportunity.
And how much would that be?
I don't have those figures, I guess in the council packet, I would assume staff could figure that out based on the monthly usage and the number of months it was, it was leaking. I really don't know what it is, but that would be my motion that we would reduce it by whatever portion.
It's $345 for a sanitary sewer on the bill.
Well...
Is that all clean water?
But it doesn't include the normal sanitary sewer fee. In other words, my motion states that it would be, the sanitary sewer fee would be reduced by the amount above what a normal month of sanitary sewer fees would be for this particular residence. And I don't know what that is, I mean, there's a bill, but the bill just has a collective amount, I'm not sure what the sanitary breakdown of that bill was. But I think that would be fair that since we didn't really process any of that commodity that we could reduce this as long as it's been fixed. And I think the resident has been, you know, made aware of how these issues are important.
Well, we have a motion, is there a second?
There's a second here and I understand what you're trying to do and I agree with that.
Thank you.
Motion and second. Other discussion?
I'm always opposed to these, but I do want amendment to say, I want to amend the motion to say that Ms. Stedman may have the option to make payments on the remaining portion. I'm all in favor of making payments, she's offered to do so and I think whatever is left is still going to be significantly more than what she's used to paying, so I would like her to be able to be put on a payment plan. That's my amendment to the motion.
Is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Okay.
Does your, okay, okay, so the amendment is the, what he said, what Al said, plus time payments? Yeah, okay.
Well, that's just the amendment.
The amendment is just the time payments.
Right.
Yes, okay.
Then we go to the main motion as amendment, you know, obviously.
We'll vote on the amendment. We have a motion and a second on the amendment. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the amendment passes. Any further discussion before we vote on the main motion? Jerry?
Ms. Stedman, I'm going to vote against this, but then again, I've always voted against these. We see these quite often and I've just for years held the hard rule that bills built, so it's unfortunate, but that's just that, as long as you know and not singling you out, I vote against these all the time and they do come up way often.
Steve?
Just for clarification, is there interest charged on the balance or not?
There is, but my preference would be if she's making the payment she commits to, that we don't charge her interest.
Okay, I'm just, just so I understand that.
Other discussion? Okay, we'll vote on the motions. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries, 5-2.
Moving on to item 3.9, a request for a premises permit for lawful gambling for the Warrior Club to be used at the ground round. Move to approve that request.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Under unfinished business, item 4.1, is to ward the contract for the library canopy to Wapishaw Construction with a base bid of $171,000. The staff recommendation is to add alternate one and two.
I'd make our motion to adopt the attached resolution with the staff recommendations for Wapishaw Construction.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Leslie?
I just wanted to confirm that since I typed up this council action last week, we do have confirmation from our Friends of the Library group. The Miller family gave permission to access their in-house fund and they are willing to pledge $60,000 towards the project, which covers the overage plus the contingency. So funding sources are secure.
Michelle?
I just want to say that I love this project because it shows the city's commitment to restoration of downtown buildings as well as making them look and feel like all the pieces that are more modern are historic, which is what we're asking business owners to do. So I like it when we, as a city, do it as well. And I think the landscaping has been, it just looks great over there. So I can't wait to see this project completed.
Al?
I just want to comment that I knew Debbie Miller and this is Wendy.
Other, Paul?
Yeah, this seems like a, a big chunk of change from the lowest bid to what the architect's estimate was, so any reason what caused that or?
The architect did make some follow-up calls because we were surprised that the estimates came back higher as well and part of it was two of the bidders were smaller firms that would have more overhead costs, they don't own a crane, they were from out of towns, there was more setup. And then the other piece of it was that the excavation costs were higher, there are only a few guys who do that work. So we were a little bit at their mercy for the excavating piece of it. And then the additional cost was related to using limestone, which I think is a key component to the project with the, keeping with the style of the building.
George?
When would construction begin on this? This year yet or?
Yes, the goal is to sign bids possibly by Friday of this week, assuming it moves forward tonight and then the Wapishaw had indicated they are ready to move on it, potentially even starting next Monday.
So now as you're working, will they be using a different door to access the library?
We have asked them to leave one door accessible, except for the pieces of the project that, for example, when they're pouring the footings, they would need to, we probably have to be closed to the public for a short period of time in order to accommodate some of the pieces of the work, but for the most part, they're going to be working in close quarters while keeping one door accessible.
And I see, I think, or I know that the reference desk is in honor of Deborah Miller Canover as well too, is it not, so?
That's correct and that's the last time that the Friends of the Library has accessed that fund.
And we're very appreciative and thank them very, very much for it, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Pam?
Would you refresh my understanding of what is alternate one and alternate two?
You bet. Alternate one is the difference between square pillars and round limestone pillars. So alternate one gives us round pillars, which matches the inset of the building and the original main entrance pillars being round. And then the second add was some additional concrete work with new sidewalk extending along Johnson Street.
Thank you.
Anything else? Guess we're ready to vote? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Thank you, councilman.
Item 4.2 is to ward the contract to construct, in addition to the wastewater treatment plant for the admin building, the low bidder is Wapishaw Construction with a bid of $487,000.
Move approval of attached resolution.
Second.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by George. Any discussion?
What's the timeline on this project or when will work begin? Okay.
Last time I talked to Paul at the plant, they were going to get started this fall, get the footings in and then they can do the work over the winter.
Okay.
And this is paid for out of the bond proceeds from the wastewater treatment bond that we passed last year.
Any other comments or questions? Alright, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Under new business, item 5.1 is a report on the assessment role for the 2017 sidewalk project and to set the schedule, to set the public hearing on Monday, October 16th.
Move to schedule the public hearing and to consider the attached resolution.
Second that.
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Pam. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carries.
Item 5.2 is a report on the assessment role for the 2017 Hamilton Street Reconstruction and approve the resolution to schedule the public hearing on October 16th.
Move to schedule.
I think Michelle moved and Jerry seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carries.
Item 5.3 is a resolution ordering assessment of cross for the 2017 miscellaneous utilities.
So moved.
Second.
Michelle moved and Jerry seconded again. All those, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Passes.
Item 5.4 is a report on the assessment role for the 2017 miscellaneous utilities and the resolution to schedule the hearing for October 16th.
So moved.
Why not?
Motion by Michelle, seconded by Jerry again. Jerry's on a roll over there. Any discussion?
Everyone else is sleeping, I guess.
It's longer than usual. I use these long meetings. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Carrie's?
Item 5.5 is the Masonic Temple rigging and drop sale updates, and Chad has a presentation for you.
Mayor and Council, typically, we would do a presentation like this in a pre-council setting, due to some timing issues with 30% design and construction schedule. We wanted to bring this presentation to you tonight. We have new information, updated information regarding restoration and sale of the drops, as well as, again, a 30% design review. Typically, we wouldn't do a 30% design review with council. That's a little bit out of normal operating procedures, but because of the context and the connections with the drops and the restoration sale, we thought it was important to bring this forward to you tonight. So really, we have three main questions to consider about the drops at this point. How do we fund the restoration? Have the most useful 10 drops been chosen? And what's the plan for the sale of the 88 remaining drops?
Steve? How do we fund the restoration? The restoration, some background information, the restoration really should occur in the theater space to minimize cost. Staff has looked at other options of removing the drops off-site in order to have them restored. Of course, that incurs some costs. If we do the restoration within the space, again, we, in a sense, minimize those costs because of the move and possible rentals of facilities to do the actual restoration in. The restoration most likely will delay the construction nine to 10 weeks between the rigging installation and the floor renovation within the auditorium space. So what that means is we would prefer to have the new rigging system in place and installed, then do the restoration and put the drops then up on the new rigging system. Again, that's a nine to 10 week process based on the estimates we've received before we would begin any floor work. So again, the restoration is estimated to cost, based on two quotes received, anywhere between $70,000 to $140,000. So again, how do we fund the restoration? So staff has put together some discussion points that we would like to hear back from council. I would like to point out, before I go over the options or potential ways to fund the restoration, we do have, the City of Winona has a park development fund at the Community Foundation. There is a subset of that fund that is for Masonic Temple restoration. The balance in that account, as of 6/30/17, was $12,795.43. So there is some dollars available at the Community Foundation. So we've outlined, really, six ways that we feel restoration could be funded. One, volunteer fundraising campaign, the viable plan. What we, I guess, mean by viable plan is that we would prefer, because of the construction schedule and the length of the restoration, that fundraising campaign not be, you know, a one event, or two event, or bake sale type of fundraising, and that's not meant to be flippant. It's just meant to be that, I think that our standpoint would be is that we need to go out and do a serious campaign with a viable plan for the restoration. The longer a campaign would last, it, again, creates delays with construction schedule. Of course, a second option could be that the city allocate reserve funds. I think with these 2018 budget discussions, you certainly understand more now about those reserve funds, you know, commonly referred to as facility funds or equipment funds that we have in reserve, could be an option for restoration. Certainly, the city could allocate bond dollars in the current bonding project. I would be a little bit hesitant about that, and the information you're about to see, because we would then need to reduce something from the rigging and the $1.8 million plan for the rigging and code upgrades that would need to come off that project list in order to fund the restoration. Of course, it could be a CIP item in 2019, so a capital improvement project. We could assign a funding source for this to take place in 2019. Again, remind you that if we wait until 2019, we do have an issue of storage of those 10 drops, and where they need to be placed if we want to continue with the construction schedule. Grants is always something that comes up, and we're often reminded as staff that there has to be a grant out there for this type of work. We have searched high and low. We've taken all recommendations. We've scoured grant guidelines, and we really aren't finding a project that fits, or better yet, it's most likely that this project tends to be out of their scope. Typically, restoration of pieces like this typically go to museums, or museum quality is typically what we're finding in the grants that we're researching. Of course, the sixth option could be proceeds from the sale of the drops that could be added to funds at the Community Foundation, or because we do have to follow the surplus property ordinance, the proceeds from any sale of the drops could come into the general fund and be used for restoration. So the second question that we wanted to address tonight, have the most useful 10 drops been selected? So council approved recommendation from the Fine Arts Council. We went through that public process, and they recommended the 10 drops for restoration. Since that time, and we've been going through the 30% drawings with our theatrical consultants and architects on the project, they have since suggested that the three main curtain drops are universally useful as a projection screen and main drapes. And both are useful needs not funded that could be met immediately. And so what that means is that this is something that the theatrical consultants have brought forward in our work on the rigging systems. They're outside of this scope. They began to ask us questions about how did you choose the 10? Why did you choose the 10? We explained that it was important to keep the scene and dimensionality of some of the scenes. You're going to see those here in a minute with the forest scene and the Hades scene, and that some of the, some of those drops then equal, you know, less than 10. And at the time, there were really two cut drops that were selected as pieces to be saved. The question came back from the theatrical consultants, well, you have currently three drops that are currently hanging in the space right now that were never taken down. One, again, could be used as a projection screen, one as a curtain. And so there is some use and some usability in those drops, but they were not chosen to be selected as the 10. So what I'd like to do is just go through a quick slideshow of the 10s that were selected, and describe these curtains in a little bit more detail. So again, the landscape scene was one that was highly rated by individuals in the community, as well as the Fine Arts Commission. This is an example of it in full use. And then by each cut drop or line set, this is line set number four. It is a cut drop. You can see wide open spaces. Again, it's just the legs on left and right, and of course, some of the branches going at the top, so this is considered a cut drop. So line set four was saved. Line set 21 was saved. Again, another leg drop or cut drop, again, to provide the dimensionality in the scene. 67 is, again, the landscape woodcut drop, again, to provide the dimensionality within the scene. Again, this is also a cut drop. And then the full backdrop, line set 93, is the full landscape backdrop. So that makes up the new, what would be the new restored landscape scene. The full line set 99, the river backdrop, was also chosen, again, primarily because of the river and the theme of Winona. And then you'll see here in a second, there'll be a picture of how that can, that backdrop can be used with the landscape scene to create another scene. So again, an example of the dimensionality with the river scene opposed to the landscape scene as the final drop at the back. So line set 30, this is a cut drop of Hades scene. Again, there is some theatrical netting in this cut drop. But again, this is part of that full scene that'll be saved for dimensionality, again, for that scene. Line set 55, again, another cut drop for the Hades scene. And then the full Hades backdrop, line set 90, to create the full scene. Another example of the full scene. That left us eight drops. The remaining two that were selected were line set 63. It was the cathedral interior cut drop. The rationale behind this scene being saved primarily was that if a solid colored background was behind this cut drop, it could be used. I think primarily the thought was for weddings. So again, that was one aspect. There were several others. I mean, certainly, the beauty of it was talked about. This one is in relatively good shape compared to the others, but would require some extra work because it is a cut drop. And line set 70 is also a cut drop. This is King Solomon's apartment. So again, this is one line set out of a full scene that was chosen to be saved. Again, rationale, again, certainly, the commission talked about the beauty, the ornateness of this line set 70. Certainly, that was a factor. Again, concept of screen behind, it certainly could be used also with some of the elements of the landscape backdrop, but again, outside of King Solomon's apartment cut drop, or the full scene, sorry. This is one of the main front curtains that still is actually hanging in the theater space today. This is one that, again, our theatrical consultants are saying you could, you could restore this. This would be an option, and it could be used in a lot of productions as and act as a curtain. So before the performance starts, this could be restored and brought up, and that could act as a main curtain for a period of time. The other curtain drop that is on line set two is the Blue G main drop front curtain. Again, this curtain, again, designed as, to act as a curtain, could again be used to set, you know, before a performance starts, that this would act as the, as the main curtain. This one has a little bit of more detail. There is the Masonic G. In the middle, it's ruby, well, faux ruby studded, so it lights behind to light up the G. Again, fits the motif of the theater space. And the main drap, drap curtain on line set one is this curtain that, again, fits the motif of the theater space and the walls, of course, and the stenciling work throughout the space. This is also a curtain that then could be used for projections. There's a significant large white space in the middle of that drop that could be used for projections, and again, could act as a main drap curtain. The curtain and these, and the projection screen that we've indicated as possibility aren't a long-term solution, but again, I think they provide us usability in the future. Certainly, in the plan, a significant projection screen would be desired, but as you're going to see here in a minute, it doesn't, isn't within the budget as of today. And then certainly, a main regular curtain is not within the budget of the 1.8 as well. So we certainly want to take a serious look at those front curtains as a possible swap out, I guess, as a, to use a term. So what we would recommend is that the 10s still remain. We certainly aren't looking to add less, for sure, or more in that context. So the fourth question is, what's the plan for the sale of the remaining 88 drops? We do have some, some questions that we'd like some direction on. Do we offer them up individually, in scenes, or the entire remaining collection? We feel that removal could be costly to a potential buyer, or present some high risk. They're not easy to move if we want to keep them on rolls. If we certainly sell them, and individuals who are interested in them want to fold them up and remove them a different way from the building, that's certainly an option. But keeping them on the rolls, again, presents some concerns for us as far as getting them out of the building. We have had inquiries, but no firm, you know, offer, and certainly, we can't do that without declaring them surplus. And again, we have this rhetorical question of what, what's the plan of the remaining 88 if we don't have a buyer? We feel that the remaining 88 need to be removed before construction begins. Certainly, our architectural consultants are saying we're going to pay a premium if those are kept in the theater space. Potential contractor is going to see them as a piece of, an item that's going to need protection during construction, and so we would like them removed before construction. And then a question that still remains is, do we perform the same process for the set pieces? Keep in mind that we've got several set pieces to the other scenes that were not chosen, and we need to address how we sell or remove those set pieces that accompany the scenes that would end up going up for sale. Now, we do have every intention of keeping some of those set pieces that either A, belong to the specific scenes we're saving, or that we think have future value. So we don't have any intention, for example, to sell the wind machine, or we would not recommend disposing of some of the set pieces possibly for display once the space is fully renovated. We think that they could also serve, some of the pieces could serve as a, you know, historical context as well. Some of those pieces, we certainly do not want to remove from the building. So just some points of information on the sale of the drops. The city does need to follow the surplus property ordinance. We'll bring back that in form of recommendation to you some more details regarding that. But the city does need to follow that ordinance. Staff tonight, at least for the context of this discussion, would recommend an online auction. And then we feel there's several buyer responsibilities. We think that the buyer should be responsible for removal of the drops, that they carry insurance. We want that in place for a couple different specific reasons of removal. Again, that's anything from, is our hoist adequate to remove them off the second floor, you know, into the alleyway of between Laird Norton Building and the Masonic Temple? And are they covered in case, you know, there is any damage to either of the buildings? Things of that nature. We want to make sure that the buyer understands the condition as is. And then again, we have this rhetorical question of if we want to set a seller reserve. So are you okay if, if either there's a no buyer, or if there is a buyer that only bids $100 for the whole lot? We have to keep those things in mind. So again, just to recap, kind of the three main questions to consider, how do we fund the restoration? Have the 10 most useful drops been chosen? What's the plan for the sale of the remaining 88 drops? And then to segue into the 30% drawings, there is, you know, consideration of the funds for the historic rigging. of the funds for the historic rigging. So council asks that we bring back the costs and break those costs out in regards to what is the total cost of restoration of those ten drops. So you have the restoration costs, and then you have the additional costs for the rigging So to segue into the thirty percent plan, staff is requesting council input, again, points to consider, these plans have caused a slight shift in phase-two work scope to remain within the budget. We'll go over those in detail here in a second. This phase only allows for work primarily on the second floor of the building. And then the historic drops rigging is now estimated at sixty-two thousand, it's between sixty-two thousand two and sixty-two thousand five hundred. And if you remember, during the decision to save the ten, staff had estimated that additional costs would be anywhere right around seventy thousand for that rigging system to be included. This is going to be a little bit difficult to see, but I'm just going to go through this again as a reminder. In 2017, the council decided to allocate the 1.8 million dollars for rigging of the building, code updates. We did build a contingency for construction, but said that if that contingency wasn't used, it could be used for stage equipment, for items like a sound system, lighting, intercom system. We, of course, are addressing electrical upgrades as it relates to the rigging system and other interior and exiting upgrades that we need for emergency systems. And then we obviously allocated costs for design, that's where we ended up at the 1.8 million. I do want to point out quickly, though, that the 2018 items were the HVAC replacement, the masonry and foundation work on the building. I wanted to mention this because we have submitted to the MHS for the masonry work, a grant for that work to happen. We made it through the pre-application phase, and we are in the final round of applicants for that project. So we did submit that grant for that work. So we estimated that to be 162,000. I believe we submitted for 227, 237 for that project. The other piece I just want to mention real quick, because we, the design of this renovation in 2017, the 1.8, did include some work to the floor within the stage, we asked our theatrical consultants to, and our architect, to consider seating as an alternate as a possibility for the contingency. And so we did have them at least look at seating for the new, for the renovated space as an option. So you're going to see a little bit of a different, a slightly different budget from what was in your packet. We do have an update. You see that in the 2017 work, there's a total cost of constructions at 1.1 million. We have to carry a design contingency of 175. As the project goes from thirty to eighty to ninety percent, that number will actually reduce, and in a lot of ways, that's money the city can use for contingency, but we do have to carry that in case there is design change. We always carry, again, the owner's construction contingency, so we have a total construction budget of 1.4 million eight hundred thousand. We have the design fees that, again, I showed in the last slide, at 160. The stage lighting is broken down there at 220 for a total construction budget of 1 million eight hundred and sixty thousand six hundred. The rigging that is for the ten drops that are to remain is within that 1 million eight sixty. Couple notes, again, we have 1 million eight hundred, and so we have to make some adjustments. There are going to be, need some things that are going to have to change in order for us to meet budget. We did want to point out, as I mentioned, that they, we do have numbers now, better numbers for seating, that ranges anywhere from 145,000 to 172,000 as an alternate to add into this project if those funds are available through the contingency. So this is a very rough sketch. To give you an idea of what spaces are going to be included in that construction in a little bit of detail, the pink, purple areas are the areas that will actually be touched by construction, obviously, within the auditorium, within the stage, and the rigging replacement. I think that's relatively obvious in that area. This is the actual stage auditorium, so the space is going to be renovated. And then we really have bathroom and code updates for exits, handicap bathrooms, renovated bathrooms, and renovated green spaces on the second floor. And then the yellow is really to indicate that this area in the building is not going to be touched, will not look any different than it does today. This is currently the mason's office, this is the grand staircase entryway, large meeting space that was primarily used by the masons for a meeting space, and then the Eastern Star Room. So this section of the building untouched with that 1.8 million. Then we really threw together something really quick for you, is this yellow space on third floor is to indicate that there's not any work within that 1.8 scheduled for third floor. There will be impacts on third floor because of what's happening on second floor, some storage is going to have to be moved. We are going to have to do some things to current spaces in order for second floor to be renovated in the way that it is. But again, as, just simply as an illustration, there's no work that's going to be taking place on third floor. So with that, I'll ask you if you have any questions on the thirty percent drawings, and then what I like to do is have a few other informational pieces, but if you have any questions at this point about the drawings, I'll take them and we'll open it up for discussion Okay, we'll certainly open up, I'll just finish up, I guess, and then we can talk about it in the grand, in larger scale, real quick. Points of information, the masons have noticed the city, they're intent to terminate their lease. So the masons have purchased a new building, and they have noticed the city, they're intent to terminate their lease of the Masonic Temple. So technically, from the lease standpoint, that's not official, but they have noticed us that they intend to leave the building. And that is tentative date is first part of December, where they'll be completely out of that building. And then TDM has noticed the city, they're intent to negotiate a new lease for production and storage space in the building. And then, sorry, finally, to recap, before we get into discussion, the city, the staff will then bring back requests for action at the October 2nd city council meeting. Again, hopefully we'll get some input here from you. But we'll recommend a funding source for the restoration of ten drops based on council direction. Staff will recommend to amend the selection of the ten drops to retain for restoration. Staff will recommend a plan for the sale of the eighty-eight additional drops and set pieces not to be retained. So with that, we'd like some input, and if there's any comments you have on any of the above, we're here to answer those questions.
Michelle.
Can you maybe take us through this question by question, so that we can give you input per question? Because the four of them, now that they're not directly in front of me.
Okay.
I don't remember them all.
Sure.
I might be the only one, but I remember the last one, but not the rest. I'm sorry, specifically.
I tried to go fast, you've got a long night ahead of you. So there are three main questions to consider about the drops. First one is, how do we fund restoration?
Okay.
We presented six options, we presented six options to you tonight. We'd like some feedback before we bring back a recommendation.
Sorry, Michelle.
Okay. I'm most comfortable with community fundraising, viability, the plan that we would work with the community, and with the last option under the grants, which the wording is escaping me, the sale of the drops. Those would be my preference. I'm a little uncomfortable with using bonded money that we've already promised to other projects. And I don't see us putting in the CIP for 2019 as being particularly effective in the plan. I also have some concerns with continuing to use reserve funds, and this would not be how I'd want to use the equipment funds. So for my preference, A and F, and I wish that grants were possible for this, but A and F would be my preference for funding, if that's my input on that, I guess. If those are indeed the right letters.
Pam.
I concur with your assessment there. I think that selling the drops and also working with the community is the way to go for fundraising. I'm questioning, though, what is, no, we've got a, we've got two estimates, 70 to 140 thousand dollars to restore them. That's a, that's huge. Can't we, can we narrow that down, or can we understand why there's such a range? One, we get a really cheap, fast job, and the other we get duct tape.
Mayor and council, I'm not quite sure how to respond to that. We asked for two estimates, two quotes. The low we got was 70, the high we got was 140.
Do we understand what might account for that difference? I don't need to know the details, but that's huge.
No, I don't, I don't think there's anything specific that I can point to. I think if we go out for official quotes, or if we choose to go out because of the cost for sealed bids, and some of that may come to light.
Is the difference, I mean, was one of them local and one of them not? Is that part of it?
One quote we received is from local, but would need assistance from others that are not local. And then one quote we received is from individuals we've been working with throughout this process to evaluate and store the drops.
Michelle.
So possibly, none of those numbers will be correct. Because when you go out for the bid process, it could be that they're either underestimating severely or overestimating. So really, we don't know. That's what that number tells me. Would you agree?
I think that happens in most bidding environments. In fairness, I think, you know, one of the quaters certainly has more experience with them, and if there's a better understanding of condition and the work that needs to be done, that might be a reason why the number is higher. But again, without going out for what I would call official process or a sealed bid environment, it's tough to say.
Paul.
I also agree, A and F. Public is watching, I think, you know, there was strong public input, and we are originally considering this. And I would encourage the public to step forward and show their support this way. I would think that the alternate drop selection, I think we should go, still make sure we stick with the ten, and I'm glad that you are saying that. The alternate drop selection, going with some of the curtain drop, may have an impact on that, the cost of the restoration. And so I don't know if that brings it down some, or elevates it some. And then I may have some questions around the mechanicals later on.
Mayor and council, we would assume that the projection curtain would be less of a cost to restore just because of the detail and, I think, really the technical pieces of the restoration of that. And again, not to, again, I don't want to sound flippant, but it's a blank white screen. Now, again, it's canvas, it needs restoration, it needs cleaning, but we're not talking about a cut drop that has theatrical netting, or there's certainly elements within the Haiti's scenes that need special attention. So one could assume that that would be a lower cost. When you look at the G curtain, though, you know, there is certainly that element within that curtain that needs special attention, so it's probably a wash.
Chad, there was, wasn't there going to be a projection screen planned? And some kind of a stage curtain planned? I guess my question here really has to do with, I mean, if those were going to be in the plan anyway, wouldn't these be two additional, original drops that we, that could be added instead of a new projection screen? Are you following this?
A projection screen and curtain were always in the plan for the renovated space.
But now that we're talking about substituting new ones for the historic ones, can't we add two? Makes sense?
I'm not following it.
He's saying the cost of the new were being factored in, so if we use the old, can we subtract the new? I think is what he's saying. Would they not come out as a wash if you use an old? And the problem with that, Mayor, if I may, is they are being factored in this phase. So what we're saying is, if we use one of the curtains and/or the projection, you have them ready to go now as opposed to waiting until we can buy them through some other funding.
So the projection screen and a main curtain drop are not within the 1.8 million that we have allocated.
Okay.
Just to refresh my memory here, I'm just trying to visualize with these curtains, curtain, the main curtain and such, how large of an apron is in front of the Bracini March? You know? Just roughly, I mean, I can't, I can't remember exactly how large it is. I mean, in terms of, if these, these stage curtains are in place, you know, what's, what could, what utilization could be made for that, that area?
Are you talking, well, that area where the drop lands, and then there's a light box that comes up?
So some footlights?
There's some footlights there, you know, that's two and a half feet roughly.
Not a large area.
And then you've got some more of the stage.
The front steps are about maybe eight feet to 10 feet from the first drop.
Okay, okay. It's been a long time since I've done this, but what do you call the kind of glass curtain that you draw from behind a scene? Is that called a scrim? Okay. So would what we're doing here allow for something like that, or is there an existing scrim, or would that be additional?
It would be additional, and will the current plan allows for any type of projection screen and/or scrim or other types of scenery to be on?
Yeah, I'm trying to think how that integrates together.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
And as we said at one point, the drops that are being replaced, if we have images of them, we could actually project those. You wouldn't get the perfect dimensionality, but you would at least be able at some point to bring up an image to evoke it at some point.
Okay, so the second question we asked, just some discussion on the ten, and I guess we just briefly touched on that. If I didn't say it before, I mean, I think we'd like to reiterate that it's new information to us. I think when, you know, the Fine Arts Commission staff certainly didn't have that information, or we would have brought that forward to them about the possibility of being a projection screen or a front curtain. Certainly, in conceptual sense, we discussed that, but I don't think to this detail. And so we certainly aren't trying to undo the ten that were selected. Again, we feel this is just new information that should be brought forward.
Michelle.
So I don't want to rethink the ten, but is it not possible that the white screen could be used as a projection screen instead of purchasing one, and that we could still salvage one of the other drops as the front curtain instead of purchasing one in our future plans? I'm not sure if what you were asking is, do we want to replace one of the ten with these options, or do we want to add the two as, not as a drop per se, but as the two other elements that we would future, we would fund in the future? I'm trying to understand what that question is really asking.
I would not recommend going past ten. It would be, again, exchange or swap, and most likely, our recommendation would be, you take the two cut drops that aren't directly associated with the scene and add one curtain, one projection. Certainly, they could be restored and used on a line set that's not dedicated to the drops. But again, and we're talking about taking it down, using it for a curtain, it's not a permanent. it for a curtain, it's not a permanent set.
How would the commission feel about that? Have we asked them? Because they did the work into picking. Like, I have no particular attachment to the two scenes that are not part of the full set. So for me, it would be an easy swap out because I realize logically we're saving, still saving 10 drops and getting dual benefit. But there may have been a specific purpose for why they picked them, and I would feel uncomfortable overruling that without their input on that, just from me personally.
And staff can certainly get that input from the Fine Arts Commission and bring it back with our recommendation.
Because I would rather than just buy a curtain, if there's a strong sense they have for those two drops, I would rather not overrule that, simply because we would gain a projection screen.
Okay.
That, that's just me, though.
I agree with that. I like the new concept, but I'd like to see their input.
I wouldn't like to echo that.
I believe the Fine Arts Commission wanted to make input anyway, so we'll bring it back to you.
I have a comment. That, that main drop curtain, number one, the one that matches the design motifs of the, that are on the rest of the, I think that would be really attractive option, more attractive than a new curtain.
This one or the other one?
No, that one.
That one.
This one. Okay. Yeah, I think the last point then was.
Same.
Sorry.
Was it the same?
Under disposal.
Sales drops. Again, staff will bring back a recommendation. I think what we would like is just some input from the council that what we presented tonight seems logical about, you know, seller or buyer responsibilities. We've kind of listed out both. I think selling the drops individually could be extremely labor intensive because of the way they are rolled. But again, would like input from council, how you'd like to do that. We would certainly recommend it goes as a, as a job lot. But again, those factors that I've mentioned, if there's not a buyer, are you comfortable if they would only go for X number of dollars? Those things are what we'd like input on.
Personally, I'd just like to insert my opinion here. I think they should be sold as a lot, and I don't think there should be a reserve. I think market will dictate the value of these drops. And I don't think they should be folded. I think they should be left on the rolls until they're sold. And when the buyer wants to fold them and get them out cheaper, that's up to them. They own them. So I would leave them on.
Do you recommend the conditions that we, as, as is?
As is insurance and all that? Yes, I would. Michelle?
I'm actually okay with selling them to individuals. I, I'm not so much concerned with a reserve because, as Mark stated, I think the market will determine what someone will pay for them. But I think there may be a higher demand for individual purchase. Now, I don't think that should restrict someone from buying all of them, because that may be how they go. But 88 drops is a lot. And if we have a hard time determining how we would even store them, if we remove them for construction and/or have a place to put them, I'm trying to fathom where a buyer in some short amount of time could figure that out. But there might be someone who would be willing to purchase one, wants to restore it and wants to display it somewhere, or has a plan for it that we don't know. So I just, I don't have an issue with someone buying one versus the whole lot. And I understand it's more work, but I think you have a wider market then, which would probably push the price up a tiny bit, because there might be more than one person who'd want to see them.
So Mayor and Council, just want to clarify that. We're not afraid of the work.
I know, we know.
It would be labor intensive, though, because if you want drop 58, it's, and the third roll, the third drop rolled in. And so then we unroll that one, and then what do we do with the other two while we're waiting for that one to sell? And so it's not necessarily the work, it's just that, it's that labor of drop that you might be interested is in that third roll on the bottom.
But if I'm willing to spend $1,000 versus $100 for the whole thing, maybe it's worth it for the city because that's more money that can go to drop restoration. I totally understand what you're saying, but...
I don't disagree with you. I just, my only other comment with that would be that that does lead to the potential delaying construction just because of that process of in and out.
Do you, do you then have a set amount of time for the auction to occur? Are you thinking that it would be over by a certain date, which would allow construction to move forward, or?
Right, yeah, sorry, I did not mention that in the presentation. I apologize. The architect at this point is suggesting that construction could start as early as early January if we continue to progress with 80%, 90%, and then seal bids and that whole process. So we're talking between now and first part of January of needing to have the space free and clear.
And are, so you're saying there's more than one drop per roll? What if you sold them by roll instead of, if there's three drops on a roll, you say these are the three drops? I don't, I don't know how else to do. I just want to make sure that if there's potential for multiple buyers to get a better price that allows us to have more money to put towards restoration, then that's the route I want to take, whatever that looks like from staff perspective.
And, and again, that's correct. And there was rhyme or reason to how they were rolled.
Great.
So it's not like it's just
Random.
Random. I mean, there was some thought put into how they were rolled and what scenes were on each roll. It's just that it's not 100% uniform. If there's something you're specifically interested in, so.
Okay.
Also, Michelle, just as part of the information, if I may, do you recommend offering them up as a job lot and individual, or individual and hope someone might bid on all of them?
I, I would, what would be easiest? If it's individual and they want them all, then they can do that. But if it's just one, if they have to buy the whole thing, then you've locked out anyone who might buy a few, is what I'm concerned about. I mean, I understand where the mayor's coming from. It does seem like it'd be great if the whole set went together, but I'm thinking realistically, that may not be possible. And then I think we're losing potential bidders and/or income. Not that I'm thinking we're going to make a ton of money with these, but any extra dollars that can go towards those drops, I think is a benefit to the restoration process.
Yes. I would like to know if you can separate them into sections. Can you sell this 12 that sort of go together, you know, kind of, without going immediately to one by one, can you suggest that people buy chunks of them?
By scene.
I don't know how to, huh?
By scene.
Yeah, by scene. And I, I think that gets, that gets us there. It gets, gives people the flexibility of using them without buying all 88.
Anybody else? George?
Is all the money in place for the rigging?
The budget estimation that you saw tonight includes the full rigging system, yes.
Okay. As far as the drops go, just sell them. The easiest avenue, sell them.
Al?
Well, just, just to comment, I mean, we've, you know, when we began this process, we thought we had quite extensive and, you know, rare drops. And now we find out they're not as rare. And so I want to caution everybody not to get their hopes too high on what those proceeds may or may not bring. Let's hope they do well. But, you know, from everything I've read and looked at, it's, you know, it doesn't look real promising as far as additional revenue. But again, we're not restoring them, and we're not storing them either. So hopefully someone can make use of them, and they're going to be adequate for them.
I guess, my concern, I guess, is to sell them individually. Let's say out of the 88 drops we're selling, and only 30 of them sell. We had 58 drops that we're stuck with, and all the good ones are gone. So then what do we do? I don't know. I guess my, my comment about selling them all is, I guess it's, deep down, I would hope that maybe somebody would buy all 88 of them, and they would all be put in one place. That would be ideal, but it may not happen.
So Mayor and Council, if we use the online gov deals that we use for a lot of our city surplus, there is an option where you could put the entire collection for sale. I would then put a reserve, a small, you know, some kind of reserve, and you give it a certain amount of time. We usually use 10 days. And if it doesn't sell within the 10 days, then you could, as, as an entire group, then you could look to selling it as scenes. And then if you don't have, if you still have scenes, then go to selling them individually. But it's, you know, if you put the reserve on it, we'd have, you know, think of something, if you, you know, wanted to sell it as a collection and it didn't sell, at least you did try to put it out there.
Michelle?
I do just want to remind everyone, too, that we're asking people to pay for the removal of these. And it may be that no one will bid on a full set, knowing that they'd have to pay for 88 of these gigantic things to somehow be removed from a building. And we can't really figure out how to do it in any type of affordable and safe way, because you can't tilt them once they're on the roll, correct? They have to stay level.
So Mayor and Council, it's really hard.
That's my concern.
It's very difficult to navigate them out of the space on the rolls.
That's going to be almost more expensive than what someone might bid for?
Removal. I think, again, these are, these are why we're asking for the input tonight, and we'll bring back the recommendations. I think these are things that we just wanted to bring forward, to think about. You know, certainly there's question marks if, if there isn't a buyer, if the whole lot doesn't sell. I mean, what if we don't have a successful fundraising effort? We've still got this question of how we're going to restore the drops. If it comes out to sealed bid and it's, you know, 160 to restore, you know. There are a lot of contingencies within this. It's why we're bringing this forward tonight. Again, as I mentioned, staff will bring back three recommendations then on October 2nd. We can certainly further discussion. If you have further questions, we'll certainly address them before the next meeting.
Paul?
If I may ask a question on the HVAC?
Sure.
I have, would we qualify on this project for the guaranteeing energy savings program, the gas grant, grants?
I believe that we will, and we can confirm with Miller Dunn-Woody if that is the case. We will circle back with that on that.
It would help pay for a good chunk of the HVAC.
Yep.
Well, I think we've given you a little bit of direction here, and we'll continue this discussion at the October meeting.
I just wanted to just ask one further question about the community fundraising effort. We'll bring back options and about how that fundraising effort could look. Again, typically, the city doesn't go out and fundraise for that. We would look for volunteers or, in some cases, a nonprofit to do some of that for our, for us or on our behalf. But again, that's something that typically the, the city doesn't necessarily go out. And we've tried to, in a loose sense, avoid that type of interaction between city staff and potential funders. And so we'll bring back recommendations about that as well.
I would also caution to check with legal about that as well.
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay. As we move on.
And we will move now to council concerns, item 7.1.
Al?
Thank you. I, I wasn't going to have anything, but I discovered a few things here, just a note of sympathy to the family of Betty Data, who has passed away. She was, along with myself and a few other community members, one of the first that went to the Blenden Community Leadership Program back in 1991. Very, very nice lady and very good community contributor. And then I also came across doing some research on something else, that Sunday, September 24th, has been declared by former Mayor Rudy Ellings in 1961, every September 24th as John A. Latch Day. I just thought I'd pass that along as a historic note. So that's all I have.
All right. Michelle?
Nothing tonight.
Pam?
Nothing tonight.
Paul? Congratulations to the WDUA and their gathering a couple weeks ago to Ride the Ridges, the Rotary Club, and their ride, despite the rain on Saturday. And to the Page, St. Mary's Page Theater, their picnic operetta was well attended yesterday. It was absolutely wonderful and great time.
George?
Nothing.
I am in shock.
We, we don't accept that from you, George.
There must be something you can say.
Your birthday or something.
No, that's coming up.
No celebrations?
All right.
No.
We might mark this down as a historic meeting.
This is a historic day.
Moving on to the consent agenda, there are two items, approval of the minutes from September 5th, the final adoption of an ordinance for the proposed fees, and that would include approving the summary ordinance.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
So I guess I'll second that.
Motion by Al, seconded by Michelle. Any comments? All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right.
I'd make a motion. We move to our closed session.
Okay. I have something I need to read before we do that. Our agenda item is, let's see here. The next agenda item for this meeting is to discuss legal strategy regarding pending litigation in the matter of City of Winona versus Chase M. Hoffman and Wendy S. Hoffman and Reed, the matter of a hazardous building located 151 East Third Street, Winona County of Minnesota, Minnesota Court File Number 85-CV-17-1808. This portion of the properly noticed regular meeting of the city council of the City of Winona will be closed pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.05, Section Subdivision 3B, under the attorney-client privilege exception to the Minnesota Open Meeting Law. The city's need for confidentiality outweighs the purposes served by the open meeting law in this case based on the following. Absolute confidentiality is necessary so that the city council and legal council can have a candid and open discussion to determine the available legal options to handle the pending, pending litigation, including strategy and any possible areas of resolution. The purpose of the closed meeting is to determine the legal options for handling the referenced pending litigation. The only business to be discussed in this meeting is the pending litigation. An open session would be detrimental because it may take place in the presence of individuals involved in the pending litigation. A closed session would benefit the public because the ultimate outcome of the pending litigation may impact the finances and regulatory authority of the city. Now, I'll entertain a motion to close this portion of the meeting, and the council will leave the room and go into closed session.
So move. Second that.
Okay. There's a motion by Michelle and seconded by Pam to go into closed session. Any discussion? Hearing none. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right. We're in closed session. And we'll come back and